...special session temporarily and to authorize the President of the General Assembly at its most recent session to resume its meeting upon request from member states. In this regard, I should like to draw the attention of delegations to document A/ES10/991, which contains a letter dated 24th April 2024 from the Permanent Representatives of Mauritania, Saudi Arabia, and Uganda to the United Nations in their respective capacities as Chairs of the Arab Group, the Organization of Islamic Cooperation Group, and the Coordinating Bureau of the Non-Aligned Movement at the United Nations in New York, requesting the resumption of the 10th Emergency Special Session. I intend to conduct the proceedings of this meeting in accordance with the rules of procedure of the General Assembly and the past practices of its Emergency Special Sessions. In keeping with established practice, I should now like to invite the attention of the General Assembly to document A/ES10/992 concerning member states that are in arrears in the payment of their financial contributions to the United Nations within the terms of Article 19 of the Charter. May I take it that the Assembly duly takes note of the information contained in this document? It is so decided. In this connection, I should like to recall that at the 39th plenary meeting of the 10th Emergency Special Session on 26th October 2023, the General Assembly decided to follow the provisions of Resolution 78/2 of 5th October 2023, by which the Comoros, Sao Toma and Principe, and Somalia are permitted to vote in the General Assembly until the end of its 78th session, and to also allow these member states to vote at the 10th Emergency Special Session. The General Assembly will now resume its consideration of Agenda Item 5 entitled "Illegal Israeli Actions in Occupied East Jerusalem and the Rest of the Occupied Palestinian Territory." In this connection, the Assembly has before it a draft resolution contained in Document A/ES10/L30, Revision 1. The President will now deliver a statement from the Rostrum. Decades ago, the situation in the Middle East marked the first significant crisis for the newly established United Nations. Since then, for almost the entire lifespan of this organization, peace in the region and for the people of Palestine in particular has remained elusive. Today, this untenable situation continues to deteriorate at alarming speed, bringing countless innocent victims into its deadly fold and pushing the region further to the brink of full-scale catastrophe. While numerous diplomatic efforts and the United Nations' resolutions have been deployed, regrettably, none have yet quelled the current cycle of death and destruction. Yet this is not a moment for the international community to falter or to look away. If anything, the horrendous events of the last seven months have only hastened the urgency of achieving a just, comprehensive, and lasting peaceful solution to the situation in the Middle East. Excellencies, today let us remember the legacy from which we hail. We stand proudly upon the shoulders of those who, many decades ago, recognized their ultimate responsibility to forge a peace that would banish the scourge and terror of war for many generations, those who knew full well the undesirable role that war and violence played in their own lives, and who made no apologies for imagining and indeed building a more peaceful world beyond it. They understood the value of international cooperation and sought the active participation of all nations, large and small, giving voice to common principles on which they dared to anchor mankind's hopes for a better future. As today's United Nations, we cannot and must not lose sight of the history we inherit or of the bold proposition that brought our organization into being: peace for all. I repeat, peace for all. Excellencies, this General Assembly is convoked today to pronounce itself within its powers and mandate and to uphold the functions and responsibilities bestowed upon it by the United Nations Charter, including under Article 4. I therefore call upon the membership to purposely assess the situation before us with nothing else in mind but a commitment to peace as our utmost ambition. Most immediately, I urge the parties to this conflict, with the support of those with leverage, to do their utmost to secure an agreement of ceasefire that would end the suffering, end the bloodshed, free all hostages, protect innocent civilians, and ensure immediate unhindered access of humanitarian aid without conditions—I repeat—without conditions for all who are in dire need. In closing, it is true that lost time is never found. It is also true that we have lost much time. We are here once again called upon to work for humanity, and we, the peoples, without exception, to believe in the essential goodness of others, as Ralph Bunch put it decades ago, in the understanding that no problem of human relations is insoluble. I appeal to all member states to so comport themselves during this debate as to maintain the dignity of this chamber and of the organization, ultimately to help bring lasting peace, to save lives, and to end violence, to which we have all dedicated ourselves in the service of the people. I thank you. I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of the United Arab Emirates on behalf of the Arab Group to introduce draft resolution A/ES10/L30, Revision 1.
I thank you for your swift response in convening this emergency special session of the General Assembly at the request of the Arab Group, the Organization of Islamic Cooperation, and the Non-Aligned Movement. As Chair of the Arab Group for the month of May, I am pleased to deliver this statement and introduce draft resolution A/ES10/L30/1, which at its core recommends that the Security Council reconsider Palestine's application for full membership in the United Nations. This draft resolution follows the use of veto by the United States against the draft resolution that Algeria submitted to the Security Council on behalf of the Arab Group on this matter last month. Your Excellencies, today marks a defining moment in our history. The draft resolution before you will have a profound impact on the future of the Palestinian people, a people who, for more than 75 years, have endured persecution and the denial of their most basic rights, a people who have patiently waited with unwavering determination for the international community to champion their right to self-determination and enable their country to gain full membership in the United Nations. The Palestinian people are a peace-loving nation, and they deserve the opportunity to effectively serve humanity through the United Nations by acceding to international treaties and conventions, and by adhering to the United Nations Charter, and by meeting the criteria for membership and with obtaining the recognition of 144 states. The State of Palestine has demonstrated that it deserves its place in the international community and is entitled to full membership. The vast majority of countries in this hall are fully aware of the legitimacy of the Palestinian bid and the justness of their cause, which faces fierce attempts to suppress it and render it meaningless today. This is evident in the attempts to forcibly displace the Palestinian people and confiscate their land, and the ongoing expansion of settlements which fragments the Palestinian Added to this are the continuous and condemned Israeli attacks on the Gaza Strip, which have resulted in death and destruction. The recent escalation in Rafah highlights the risk of exacerbating an already unprecedented humanitarian disaster. Israel has disregarded all international resolutions and overtly rejected the two-state solution. Israel has denied the Palestinian people's right to declare their independent and sovereign state. As an international community, we have a responsibility to uphold the internationally agreed upon terms of reference for ending this conflict. Most crucially, the two-state solution based on the borders of the 4th of June 1967. Granting Palestine full membership in the United Nations will send a powerful message in support of the two-state solution. By voting in favor of today's draft resolution, you will demonstrate that the international community refuses to settle for anything less than upholding the legitimate rights of peoples and rejecting double standards. This is the protective shield for our countries in the face of current conflicts and crises in our world today. Fulfilling the UN's historic obligation towards the Palestinian people is long overdue, but it is never too late. Today, more than ever, the Palestinian people need the support of the United Nations. Today, each country has a freedom to choose its position and how it will be remembered in history. Will you take the side of truth, justice, and the principles of equality upon which the United Nations was founded? Will you defend an international order rooted in the rule of law and the legitimate rights of states to full membership? Will you support a people who have endured occupation and aggression for more than seven decades? Are we going to send a clear message to the Security Council today that we will not relent in demanding Palestine's right to full membership and that the Council must respond to the will of the international community? Mr. President, your excellencies, the draft resolution presented today is unambiguous. As we have mentioned, it recommends that the Security Council reconsider and support Palestine's request in light of the General Assembly's recognition of Palestine's eligibility and the advisory opinion of the ICJ dated May 28, 1948, and in accordance fully with Article 4 of the United Nations Charter. Despite this, this resolution alone does not do justice to the State of Palestine as it only grants additional rights, meaning that Palestine will remain an observer state without the right to vote in the General Assembly or put forward its candidature for United Nations organs. Therefore, we call upon the Security Council to respond to the General Assembly, this global body, and to the overwhelming majority of the international community by issuing a positive recommendation on the membership of the State of Palestine. This will enable the General Assembly to decide on Palestine's admission to the United Nations. The draft resolution also affirms the inalienable right of the Palestinian people to self-determination, including the right to establish an independent and sovereign state. The draft resolution also calls for a renewed international effort to end, without delay, Israel's occupation that began in 1967, and to reach a just, lasting, and peaceful settlement to the Palestinian question. Adopting this resolution, we represent a historic step towards rectifying the historic injustice inflicted upon the Palestinian people for decades. It will bolster Palestine's status and participation in international fora. Voting against this resolution would be an abandonment of moral and legal responsibilities towards the Palestinian cause. It may also be interpreted as a green light for Israel to continue its violations which undermine the two-state solution. Therefore, the Arab Group calls on all peace-loving nations that defend the legitimate rights of states to vote in favor of this resolution. Finally, while the Arab Republic of Egypt and the State of Qatar continue their tremendous efforts to reach an immediate and permanent ceasefire in Gaza, the Arab Group emphasizes the importance of the international community creating a serious political horizon to relaunch the negotiating process that would contribute to achieving a just and comprehensive peace for the Palestinian people in accordance with the Arab Peace Initiative and other international references.
Mr. President, before I conclude, I kindly request that you suspend the debate at 11:00 a.m. this morning to proceed to take action on draft resolution A/ES10/L30/1, given the importance of the matter, with the understanding that the debate would resume immediately after the vote on the draft resolution and that the 10th Emergency Session would be temporarily adjourned after the conclusion of the debate. I thank you, Mr. President.
The representative of the United Arab Emirates has moved that the debate on Agenda Item 5 be suspended at 11:00 a.m. today for the Assembly to proceed to consideration of the draft resolution A/ES10/L30/1, and that the debate would continue after the action on the draft resolution. It is my understanding that, without setting a precedent, if the Assembly were to decide to suspend the debate at 11:00 a.m. today, to proceed to consideration of draft resolution A/ES10/L30/1, and to continue the debate after the action on the draft resolution, and if the Assembly were to subsequently adopt the draft resolution, the 10th Emergency Special Session would be adjourned temporarily following the conclusion of the debate on Item 5. Is there any objection to the motion? I hear no objection. It is so decided. I now give the floor to the Observer State of Palestine.
Mr. President, dear colleagues, I stand before you as lives continue falling apart in the Gaza Strip, torn apart in the most brutal and devastating ways. I stand before you as more than 35,000 Palestinians have been killed, 80,000 have been maimed, 2 million have been displaced, and everything has been destroyed. No words can capture what such loss and trauma signifies for Palestinians, their families, communities, and for our nation as a whole. As Palestinians in Gaza have been pushed to the very edge of the Strip, to the very brink of life, and in the ever-narrowing space they are besieged in bombs and bullets continue hunting them down. I stand before you as famine is settling in, by design and by the decision of the Israeli government, killing the most vulnerable among our people, children and women. Israel closed the crossings instead of opening them, including the Rafah Crossing, seizing by force the Palestinian crossings point of Rafah. Humanitarian convoys were attacked with its blessing, and the honor of a headquarters was assaulted with its complicity. At the time where the world was calling to flood Gaza with humanitarian aid and calling for a ceasefire, Israel imposed a drought. Its plan has not changed: destroy and displace. I stand before you as every inch of Gaza has witnessed massacres, as mass graves continue to be uncovered where hospitals used to stand, as the world is barely starting to grasp the cruel and extensive nature of the actions committed against the Palestinian people. I stand before you as the Israeli Prime Minister is ready to kill thousands more to ensure his political survival, as he openly declares the Palestinian state is an existential threat and together with his co-conspirators continues, 76 years after the Nakba, to try and finish the job. Israeli's war is against the Palestinian people as a whole. Its occupation forces and settlers kill daily in the West Bank, including East Jerusalem. Its bulldozers displace Palestinian communities and demolish Palestinian homes everywhere. I have heard many praise, the resilience of the Palestinian people, and we are resilient. But no nation, no family, no person should have to endure such suffering for so long. Such injustice, from birth to premature death, one generation after the other. No parents should know such fear, such powerlessness. No children should have to suffer in their flesh what Palestinian children are experiencing. As we speak, 1.4 million Palestinians in Rafah wonder if they will survive today and wonder where to go next. There is nowhere left to go. Mr. President, I have stood hundreds of times before at this podium, often in tragic circumstances, but none comparable to the ones my people endure today. I have stood hundreds of times before at this podium, but never for a more significant vote than the one about to take place, a historic one. We faced and continue to face attempts to push us out of geography and out of history, but by forcible displacement, subjugation, or death, or to say it in even clearer terms by ethnic cleansing, apartheid, or genocide. Against all odds, we survived. Our flag flies high and proud in Palestine and across the globe and on the campus of Columbia University. It has become a symbol raised by all those who believe in freedom and is just rule, by all those who can no longer stand idly by in the face of such utter injustice. It is true that we will not disappear, but the lives lost cannot be restored. The marks visible and invisible left by this horrific assault that has yet to end on bodies and souls, on families and communities, on each single Palestinian in the Gaza Strip can never be truly conveyed. We did not write the UN Charter. We did not enact international law. We just demanded to see them applied to us, and have been until now denied their protection. As the campaign to displace and destroy the Palestinian people reaches its ultimate levels, you can decide to stand by the right of a nation to live in freedom and dignity on its ancestral land, to stand with peace, which requires... which requires the recognition of our rights, not their continued denial. Or you can stand on the sidelines of history or worst, obstruct its natural path forward. Mr. President, I have sat in these halls next to liberation movements who one by one finally took their rightful place in this august chamber and again, without a doubt, the day will come where Palestine will take its rightful place among the community of free nations. Occupation and colonialism and death and destructions are not our fate. They are imposed on us, but freedom is our sole destiny. We share with many nations represented in this hall the suffering they endured, the struggles they led, the dreams they had. You have been witnesses to the story of Palestine and you can only look at it from the prism of your own people's journeys towards liberation. Liberation so life can prevail, liberation so peace can prevail. We want peace. We want freedom. There is no word harder to pronounce when tens of thousands of your people have been killed. We do not use it lightly. We want peace. Our freedom is not an obstacle to peace. It is the only path leading to it. If you do not support our freedom, you do not support peace. Our right to self-determination, to independent statehood, to membership of these United Nations cannot be subject to an Israeli veto. They are not up for negotiations. They are our inherent rights as Palestinians. Israel is clear that it wants to destroy Palestinian statehood. What does it mean to be for the two-state solution if you allow for the destruction of the Palestinian state? Mr. President, dear colleagues, dear brothers and sisters, dear friends, Palestine has been for generations of your compatriots the ultimate test for humanity's ability to live up to its premise, to promise, promises. And it is once again for this generation the ultimate measure of the quest for justice. Its name was embraced by your founding fathers and your greatest leaders and by our peoples. It is an integral part of the legacy of your ancestors and of the engagement of your younger generations. People from all creeds and faiths and race and age in the biggest cities and in the most remote villages are mobilizing for Palestine, mobilizing for a ceasefire, for an end of the occupation, for freedom and justice and for peace. Mr. President, the UN Charter was often invoked during our negotiations and we will always abide by the Charter, including when the processes it forces and limitations it imposes are to our detriment. And including after having been confined in an observer status for 50 years now, we wish from all those who invoked the Charter to abide by the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination guaranteed by the Charter, to confront the acquisition of Palestinian territory by force, denounced by the Charter, to preserve future Palestinian generations from the scourge of occupation and war as foreseen by the Charter. A yes vote is a vote for Palestinian existence. It is not against any state, but it is against the attempts to deprive us of our state. That is why the Israeli government is so opposed to it, because they oppose our independence and the two-state solution altogether. It is an investment in peace and thus empowers the forces of peace. How can anyone explain that Israel was admitted to the United Nations 75 years ago on the power of a resolution that foresaw two states and without awaiting awaiting an end of the conflict and while continuing to deny our rights and our existence and that the state of Palestine 75 years later is still required to wait and remains met by a closed door preventing it from being admitted to this organization. Your vote today of course says a lot about your solidarity with Palestine, but also about who you are and what you stand for. It matters and I know an overwhelming majority of you will stand again with the Palestinian people in their hour of need and you will stand for just and lasting peace for the benefit of all. In simple words, voting yes is the right thing to do and I can assure you you and your country for years to come will be proud to have stood for freedom, justice and peace in this darkest hour. As everyone is saying, Free Palestine, Free Palestine, and peace for all. And I repeat, Free Palestine and vote yes for the resolution and I thank you so much.
I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Israel.
Thank you, Mr. President. Over 85 years ago, as World War II began, a force of sheer evil rose up with the goal of dominating the planet through genocide and destruction. After Hitler's rise to power, the Nazis sought to subjugate humanity under their iron fist while annihilating the Jewish people, but not only us, all those who they deemed subhuman. But in the face of this genocidal plot, the forces of good came together in order to end this horror, to return freedom and peace to the world. And following the Allies' victory, this institution, here, the United Nations, was founded with the mission of ensuring such tyranny never raises its ugly head again, never. Today, you are about to do the exact opposite and advance the establishment of a Palestinian terror state which will be led by the Hitler of our times, the Hitler of our times. In the 1940s, the world united to destroy a murderous regime, yet today, with sick and twisted irony, the very body established to prevent evil is now welcoming a terror state into its ranks. What would Churchill say if he were alive today? What would Roosevelt think? They are turning in their graves, turning in their graves. This week, only this week, Israel commemorated Yom Ashoah, Holocaust Remembrance Day. And it is during our sacred week that this shameless body has chosen to reward modern-day Nazis with rights and privileges? As Israelis mourn the Jewish babies burned in the crematoria, you here at the UN usher in the collaborators of the Israeli babies burned on October 7th. How can you be so blind? Is it your political interest? Are these your distorted values? Are you being threatened by diplomatic terror of the Palestinians and their collaborators? There are many here. Colleagues, today's destructive vote is not only opening the UN's doors to the terror-supporting Palestinian Authority. If it was, then it would be bad enough. But as you all know, the Palestinian Authority does not even have control of its own territory. Do you know who controls Gaza? You probably have forgotten because in all of your resolutions here since October 7th, you have failed to even call them out by name. So, I'll remind you. It's the terrorists of Hamas. But Hamas doesn't only control Gaza. Hamas has also taken over Palestinian neighborhoods, Palestinian villages in Judea and Samaria, what you call the West Bank. In every poll, Hamas today is predicted to win Palestinian elections if they ever happen. So today, the General Assembly is not only about to grant the rights of a state to the Palestinian Terror Authority. Today you are also about to grant privileges and rights to the future terror state of Hamas. You have opened up the United Nations to modern-day Nazis, to genocidal jihadists committed to establishing an Islamic state across Israel and the region, murdering every Jewish man, woman, and child. It makes me sick, sick. In the years to come, you will have to explain how, in opposition to all morality and the UN Charter, you did everything to give a state to a group of mass murderers, to the Hitlers of our times. So here it is. I present to you the future outcome of today's vote. This is the outcome of your vote. Soon to be President Yichya Sinwar, president tyrant of the state of Hamas, sponsored by the UN, by the way. And he owes his deepest gratitude to you, the General Assembly. When Hamas rises to power, the Palestinian representative who just spoke here, you know what will happen to him. He will be recalled. And if he returns, he will likely be thrown off a rooftop by Hamas, just as the Palestinian Authority representative were when Hamas took over Gaza back in 2006, '07. And in his place, this body will welcome a Hamas representative to its ranks. A terrorist diplomat whose stated goal is Jewish genocide, just like his Iranian counterpart here. With this new precedent, we may see here representatives of ISIS or Boko Haram that will sit among us. You know what? This will be fitting for the new moral standard being set here today, giving the rights of a state to an entity that is already partially controlled by terrorists and will be replaced by a force of child murdering Hamas rapists. Unbelievable. Truly unbelievable. What you are carrying out today is reminiscent of how the powers of Europe capitulated to Hitler in the Munich Agreement. The UN is targeting the law-abiding democracy of Israel while appeasing the Nazi jihadist forces of Hamas and Iran. And Churchill's remarks then on the choice of cowardice and appeasement in the face of murderous dictators are relevant to your vote today because today you have a choice between weakness, shame and conciliation and fighting a war against terror. And sadly, you will choose weakness, but you will receive in return not only shame, but war in the future as well. Bravo. Colleagues, today, another travesty is being committed here by the General Assembly, an unforgivable act. The destruction of the United Nations Charter. The UN Charter, the sacred document which serves as the foundation of everything we are supposed to do here is being trampled upon. It is being thrown out the window. You, you are spitting on the very values that were formulated to bind this organization. With today's destructive resolution, you are circumventing the Security Council, ignoring its decision and violating the norms this organization has abided by. The Charter was drafted for a reason, but most of you care nothing for the qualifications it outlines. So let me remind you what the Charter says about admitting new, new UN membership. Membership in the United Nations is open to all other peace-loving states which accept the obligations contained in the present Charter. Peace-loving. Number two, the admission of any such state to membership in the United Nations will be affected by a decision of the General Assembly upon the recommendation of the Security Council. With today's vote, you are not only bypassing the Security Council in violation of the Charter, but you are besterizing the meaning of peace-loving. You know that the Palestinians are the exact opposite of peace-loving. You know this. Since they rejected the UN partition plan in 1947, they rejected it. They have only tried to destroy Israel, time and again. They are terror-loving, not peace-loving. They are anything but peace-loving. The Palestinian Authority pays lifelong salaries to terrorists. It's in their budget. They teach martyrdom and jihad in their classrooms. They glorify death and murder. The Palestinians indoctrinate their children to murder Israelis and commit terror attacks. And then, when Israel defends herself, the Palestinian representative comes here, stands here, shedding his crocodile tears, as if he did not send all of them to commit suicide or terror attacks. Not a single Palestinian leader, not even one, has condemned the October 7th massacre. He calls the Hamas his brothers. And this is who you want to bestow the rights of a state upon? A terror entity? As long as you, as long as so many of you are Jew-hating, you don't really care that the Palestinians are not peace-loving. Despite your obligation to the UN Charter, you are here today to expose what the Charter truly means to you. When it comes to the lives of Israelis and Jews, the UN Charter means nothing to you, nada, kaput. By ignoring the Charter and granting the Palestinians the privileges of a member state, you are proving that morality is just a slogan for you while politics and interests prevail. To you, the UN Charter is just a meaningless document and the vote today will prove that. You know what you're doing today? Today you are... Today, you are gutting the Charter. And you are doing it in the wake of the most brutal massacre of my people since the Holocaust. On the ashes of the October 7th massacre. Why? This day will go down in infamy. The UN, an organization that was established in the aftermath of the systematic murder of six million Jews, pays no heed to its founding charter and is advancing another genocidal regime that threatens the existence of the Jewish people. And I want the entire world to remember this moment, to remember this immoral act. So today, I will hold up a mirror for you, a mirror. This is your mirror. So that you can see exactly what you are inflicting upon the UN Charter with this destructive vote. This is... You are shredding the UN Charter with your own hands. Yes, yes, that's what you're doing, shredding the UN Charter. Shame on you. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Israel. In light of the decision taken by the General Assembly earlier today to suspend the debate on Agenda Item 5 at 11:00 AM, the Assembly shall now proceed to consider Draft Resolution A/ES10/L30/Rev1. For your information, the draft resolution has closed for e-sponsorship. I now give the floor to the representative of the Secretariat.
Thank you, Mr. President. I should like to announce that since the submission of the draft resolution and in addition to the delegations listed on the L document, the following countries have also become co-sponsors of A/ES10/L30/Rev1: Afghanistan, Algeria, Angola, Azerbaijan, Bahamas, Belgium, Botswana, Brazil, Brunei Darussalam, Burkina Faso, Cambodia, Chile, China, Comores, the Democratic People's Republic of Korea, the Dominican Republic, Eritrea, Honduras, Indonesia, Iraq, Ireland, Kazakhstan, Kyrgyzstan, Laos People's Democratic Republic, Mauritius, Mozambique, Nigeria, Norway, Peru, Senegal, Sierra Leone, Slovenia, Somalia, Spain, Sri Lanka, Suriname, Tajikistan, Thailand, Trinidad and Tobago, Turkey, United Republic of Tanzania, Vietnam, and Zimbabwe. If any other countries wish to co-sponsor AES10/L30/Rev1, please signify by pressing the microphone button. Antigua and Barbuda. Niger. That's it, Mr. President. I thank you.
I thank the representative of the Secretariat. Before giving the floor for explanations of vote before the vote, may I remind delegations that explanations of vote are limited to 10 minutes and should be made by delegations from their seats. I now give the floor to the distinguished delegate of the Russian Federation.
President. Seven months ago, another escalation of the Palestine-Israeli conflict began. We won't dwell on its horrific consequences that it has had so far. We'll simply say that over this time, as a result of the Israeli military operation, more than 35,000 people have died in Gaza alone, many of them are women and children. Another 78,000 civilians have been injured. This monstrously tragic statistic has nothing comparable to it in modern history. If Israel goes ahead with its plan to assault Rafa, where more than one and a half million people have congregated who fled from all corners of Gaza, catastrophe will be destroyed. Practically all civilian infrastructure, including schools and hospitals, has been destroyed. These evaluations of the catastrophic situation in Gaza is something that's shared by the vast majority of the international community, which we can see here for ourselves today. President, the tragic situation on the ground reaffirms the position of our country and the vast majority of the international community about the need for, alongside efforts for a ceasefire, to not forget about the importance of creating the conditions for direct dialogue between Palestinians and Israelis on a whole host of final status issues. The outcome of this process should be the implementation of the two-state formula approved by the international community, Israel and Palestine, living side by side in peace and security within 1967 borders with East Jerusalem as its capital. For this dialogue to succeed, Israel and Palestine need to be on equal footing vis-à-vis Security Council decisions. Inter alia, it is our common duty to redress the historic injustice regarding the aspirations of the Palestinian people to their own sovereign and contiguous state, something that should have been adopted at the UN in 1948. We are convinced that fully-fledged membership of Palestine of the UN would help provide an equal initial negotiating position with Israel, who received this fully-fledged status more than 75 years ago. Indeed, the admission of the state of Palestine to the UN would be a first practical step towards a fair resolution to the Palestinian question at a UN-approved platform, underpinned by generally-recognized international legal foundations. This was the focus of Algeria's draft resolution submitted to the Security Council. However, on the 18th of April, the whole world bore witness to yet another fifth US veto who blocked the Palestinian application for UN membership. This spike of violence in the Palestinian-Israeli conflict shows what tragic consequences can arise from attempts to monopolize mediation functions and efforts of one country to depict itself as the world's police. President, after the US blocking of the work of the Security Council on the Palestinian-Israeli farce, a halt and admission of Palestine as a fully-fledged member of the UN specifically, a very unfortunate and unusual situation has arisen, and it requires unusual solutions to it. Therefore, before us today, there is a far from standard draft resolution. Many of its elements are being considered for the first time by the General Assembly and would normally require more detailed study in any other case. However, they pertain to providing further rights, not to some hopeful, but to Palestine, who because of the US position has had to be satisfied by merely being a permanent observer to the United Nations. And it would remain as such after the adoption of this draft. However, they would receive other opportunities, further opportunities, for more effectively participate in the work of the UN General Assembly and part of the meetings held under its aegis. We see here an opportunity to impartially address the historic injustice towards the long-suffering Palestinian people who have, over the last seven months, lost an unprecedented number of their civilians. The consequences of the actions of Israel, covered for by the United States, were we felt for many years. And to overcome them, Palestinians need to be maximally involved in the work of UN-specialized bodies. Today's draft seeks to provide as much assistance to this as possible. We'd underscore that this is not an ideal draft, inter alia. We believe that the draft resolution did not mention the occupying powers and the United States, however, it underscored that this decision is a one-off and does not set, as shown in the text of the draft, a precedent. We intend to vote in support of this document in memory of those Palestinian civilians who, because of the inability of the international community and the UN to stop the bloodshed, did not live long enough to see Palestine's admission as a fully-fledged member of our organization. We call on those who are not indifferent to their fight and to fight for their rights to do the same. However, it's crucial to understand that adoption of this resolution does not replace the main task here, which nevertheless must be addressed very soon. Palestine must become a fully-fledged member of the UN. The recommendation to the Security Council in the draft to once again consider the application of Palestine for UN membership is something we deem to be its most important element. It is a moral duty of everyone. Only fully-fledged membership will allow Palestine to stand alongside other members of the organization and fully enjoy the rights that this status implies. Before this, the path set forth in the UN Charter still needs to be followed. We hope that this time, the US, who today has had every opportunity to see for themselves the vast support of the international community, will not block at the Security Council a positive decision to this question and will soon, at the UN General Assembly, the G.A. will be able to consider, upon a positive recommendation of the Council, a draft resolution on the admission of Palestine to the UN family. The Palestinian people have long merited this. Thank you for your attention.
I thank the Russian Federation for its statement. And I now invite the delegation of Pakistan to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, I've asked for the floor to explain Pakistan's vote on the draft resolution contained in Document A/ES10/L30/Rev1, submitted by the United Arab Emirates on behalf of the co-sponsors. Pakistan fully supports the draft resolution. We did not co-sponsor the draft at the request of the state of Palestine in order to be able to respond to adverse moves against this draft. Mr. President, it is clear that we are meeting in the shadows of the gravest crimes committed and the gravest violations of the principles of the UN Charter since the Holocaust during the Second World War. The distinguished representative of Palestine has described more eloquently than I could of the slaughter and devastation that has been visited on Gaza by an outlaw Israeli regime. Israel has refused the calls by this Assembly, by the Security Council, and even by its patrons and friends to halt the massacre of innocents and accept an immediate ceasefire. The Israeli leadership has reneged on negotiated deals for a ceasefire. It has now initiated its assault on Rafa, which the UN Secretary-Junior has rightly warned, and I quote, "would be a strategic mistake, a political calamity, and a humanitarian nightmare." Indeed, there will come a day when Israel will be held accountable for the crimes that it is committing in Palestine, especially in Gaza today. And we shall work towards holding Israel and its leadership accountable for these crimes. Yet what we have heard today are insults. Insults hurled at the United Nations, at this Assembly, and at its member states. This is the arrogance of the aggressor. It reflects the impunity of the occupier. The occupier of a land for over 70 years, trampling the inherent and charter-given right of the Palestinian people to self-determination. And we hope that the Assembly will appropriately respond to such insults, because I think it is contrary to the expectations of a member state and to the standards and practices of the United Nations. Mr. President, today, the General Assembly is asked to take a first step towards a final settlement of the conflict. An important step to rectify the historic injustice against the Palestinian people. It was as a result of this Assembly's vote in 1947 that Palestine was partitioned between Israel and a Palestinian state. Yet only Israel is a member of the United Nations. The Palestinian people have been denied their right to self-determination since 1947. And after 1967, they have been obliged to live under Israel's brutal occupation. This General Assembly can partially redress this historic injustice by admitting Palestine as a full member of the United Nations. It meets all the criteria of membership. Its membership enjoys the support of the vast majority of the UN member states. It is regrettable, therefore, that Palestine's membership has been blocked in 2011 and again two weeks ago by the negative vote of one permanent member of the Security Council. The assertion that Palestine's admission can happen only through negotiations reflects the inequity of this position. Negotiations must have a level playing field. If Israel is negotiating as a full member of the United Nations, so too should Palestine. Mr. President, the adoption of the draft resolution contained in Document L30/Rev1 will determine, I am sure, with the near-unanimous support of member states, that Palestine is qualified for membership. It will urge the Security Council to reconsider and endorse the admission of Palestine as a full member state. In the meantime, the General Assembly would accord all the rights for the fullest possible participation of the state of Palestine in the General Assembly and other UN organs and conferences. This exceptional measure applies only to Palestine and does not constitute a precedent, as the resolution states. The adoption of this resolution will be a partial, yet vital step towards redressing the historic injustice against the people of Palestine. It will reflect a political reality which would facilitate the revival of a peace process to realize the universally agreed objective of creating a two-state solution, the objective of establishing a viable and contiguous Palestinian state along the four June 1967 borders with Al-Quds as its capital. I thank you, Mr. President.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Pakistan for his statement. We have heard the last speaker in explanation of vote before the vote. Before proceeding to take a decision on Draft Resolution A/ES10/L30/Rev1, I wish to address the question concerning the majority required for the adoption of the draft resolution. In light of Article 18, Paragraphs 2 and 3 of the Charter of the United Nations, is there any objection to taking action on Draft Resolution A/ES10/L30/Rev1 by a two-thirds majority of the members present? majority of the members present and voting? I see no objection. The two-thirds majority of members present and voting is therefore required for the adoption of draft resolution AES10-L30-REV1. The General Assembly will now take a decision on draft resolution A/ES10-L30-REV1 entitled “Admission of New Members to the United Nations”. A recorded vote has been requested. We shall now begin the voting process. Those in favour of draft resolution A/ES10-L30-REVISION1 please signify. Those against and abstentions.
The General Assembly is now voting on draft resolution A/ES10-L30-REVISION1 entitled “Admission of New Members to the United Nations”. Will all delegations confirm that their votes are accurately reflected on the screen? The voting has been completed. Please lock the machine.
The result of the vote is as follows: in favour, 143; against, 9; abstentions, 25. Draft resolution A/ES10-L30-REV1 is adopted. Before giving the floor for explanations of vote after the vote, may I remind delegations that explanations of vote are limited to ten minutes and should be made by delegations from their seats. I now give the floor to the delegation of Singapore.
Mr. President, the General Assembly has just adopted an important resolution expressing support for Palestine’s membership in the United Nations and recommending that the Security Council reconsider this matter favourably. Singapore voted in favour of this resolution after serious and careful consideration. I’d like to explain and place on record the reasons for Singapore’s support for this resolution. First, Singapore’s support for this resolution is a vote in favour of a negotiated two-state solution at a critical juncture in a very troubled region. Singapore has consistently advocated for and supported a negotiated two-state settlement consistent with the relevant UN Security Council resolutions as the only viable path for achieving a comprehensive, just, and durable solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. Both Israel and Palestine have the right to exist and to live in peace within secure and recognised boundaries, free from threats or acts of force. Singapore joins the rest of the international community in calling on leaders of both sides to show leadership and courage and take the difficult but necessary steps towards a two-state solution. The prospect for peace between Israel and Palestine have become even bleaker, and this is precisely why we must do everything possible to cease hostilities and revive efforts to work towards a two-state solution. The heinous terrorist attacks by Hamas on the 7th of October last year brutally killed over 1,200 Israelis and other nationalities, with the taking of more than 200 hostages, many of whom remain in captivity. These attacks cannot be condoned or justified by any history of injustice, animity, or conflict between Israelis and Palestinians, and Singapore has repeatedly condemned them. In response, Israel has exercised its legitimate right of self-defence, but Israel’s military actions have gone too far and caused far too much human suffering and property destruction. The death of around 35,000 Palestinians and the humanitarian disaster in Gaza is tragic. The result of these events has been outrage on both sides, breakdown of the fragile trust between both peoples, and the shattering of any sense of security for both Israelis and Palestinians. As a friend of both sides, we are deeply grieved by this state of affairs. Singapore’s vote today reflects our heartfelt desire to see both parties resume direct negotiations in good faith, demonstrating courage to take the tremendously difficult but essential first steps towards a two-state solution and a durable peace. We recognise that this will be a painful and long-drawn process. The work to rebuild trust and restart dialogue must begin now. Both sides have legitimate rights and shared responsibilities, and difficult compromises must be struck through direct negotiations. Secondly, Singapore’s support for the resolution is in line with our consistent and longstanding support for the principles of international law and the implementation of all relevant UN resolutions. The General Assembly Resolution 181, amongst other things, divided the mandate of Palestine into separate Arab and Jewish states. The UN Security Council Resolutions 242 and 338 called for the withdrawal of Israel’s armed forces from territories occupied in the Six Day War. Subsequent resolutions have referred explicitly to a two-state solution. Unfortunately, these resolutions have never been implemented. Thirdly, we support the right of the Palestinian people to a homeland. In 1988, Singapore welcomed the Palestinian Liberation Organisation’s proclamation of the State of Palestine. We did so in the context of a two-state solution. At that time, the Palestine National Council had expressed support for an international conference in accordance with UNSC Resolutions 242 and 338. Most importantly, the PLO explicitly rejected terrorism and recognised the right of the State of Israel to exist. We saw these moves as progress towards a durable solution for this longstanding conflict. Fourthly, in supporting this resolution we adopted today, Singapore reiterates that terrorism has no place in any process leading to a stable and peaceful political solution. Groups, including Hamas, that continue to deny Israel’s existence or refuse to renounce terrorism, have no place in a Palestinian state. To create the foundations for a lasting peace, we must restore hope and offer the possibility of peace as an alternative to the endless cycle of violence and retribution. As a friend of both Israel and Palestine, we urge both sides to eschew violence and resume negotiations towards a two-state solution with the help and support of the international community. Mr. President, notwithstanding our support in favour of the resolution, Singapore reserves its position on the scope of the annex to the resolution. In our view, any additional rights and privileges to be granted under the resolution must be granted in a manner that is entirely consistent with the UN Charter. This is important, not only in this case, but also for similar future cases, because the UN Charter, which binds member states, provides for the exercise of certain rights and obligations only by member states. I thank you very much for your attention.
I thank the distinguished representative of Singapore. Before giving the floor to the next speaker, may I call upon all participants to keep their voices down so that we can listen to statements. I now offer the floor to the delegation of Denmark.
Thank you, Mr. President. Seventy-seven years ago, in this assembly, Denmark voted in favour of establishing two states in the former mandate of Palestine. Today’s vote is an expression of Denmark’s continued commitment to the realisation of a two-state solution, a peaceful, lasting, and sustainable solution where the State of Israel and an independent State of Palestine can live side by side in peace and security. Denmark has consistently stood by Israel and its inherent right to self-defence in accordance with international law. We have also supported the Palestinian right to statehood and the building of the Palestinian Authority, and we continue to do so. Twelve years ago, Denmark voted in favour of granting Palestine status as a non-member observer state to the United Nations. Our vote today is a natural continuation hereof and an important step towards Palestinian membership of the United Nations. At the same time, Denmark’s vote today does not entail formal bilateral recognition of a sovereign Palestinian state. This is a separate question which we’ll continue to consider within the framework set out by international law. It is the position of Denmark that such recognition should happen as a result of a two-state solution negotiated between the parties. Mr. President, after seven months of devastating conflict, the political horizon towards a two-state solution can seem far into the distance, but we must never lose sight of this common goal. Hopefully, today’s vote can be a step in that direction. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished delegate of Denmark, and I now invite the distinguished delegate of the Islamic Republic of Iran to take the floor.
In the name of God, the compassionate and merciful, Mr. President, the Islamic Republic of Iran expressed its support for Palestine’s full membership in the United Nations. The admission of Palestine as a full member of the UN is a first step and pivotal moment in addressing the historical injustice endured by the Palestinian people. We reiterate the operative paragraph 1 of the resolution just adopted, upon which the General Assembly determines that the State of Palestine is qualified for membership in the United Nations in accordance with Article 4 of the Charter, which means it is a peace-loving state, is able and willing to carry out the obligations of the Charter, and should therefore be admitted to membership in the United Nations. The Islamic Republic of Iran acknowledged and supports the General Assembly decision today. The decision represents a modest yet crucial step in fulfilling the international community’s obligation toward the people of Palestine and restoring some of Palestinians’ inherent rights. Palestine has demonstrated its commitment to peace and its ability to fulfil the obligation on the UN Charter. Consequently, it deserves full membership in the United Nations. Conversely, the Israeli regime’s actions disqualify and render this regime ineligible as a peace-loving entity capable of holding the UN Charter’s obligations. The Israeli regime consistently violates international law, the UN Charter, and UN resolutions. It refuses to comply with the legally binding orders of International Court of Justice and persists in egregious violations, including massacre war crimes, crime against humanity, and act of genocide. The appalling reports of mass grave discovered in the Nasser and Ashraf medical facilities in Gaza paint a harrowing picture of the war crimes and crimes against humanity perpetrated by this regime. Approximately 400 bodies, including women and children, were found buried, serving as a stark example of the regime’s brutality and disregard for human life. These actions run counter to the fundamental value of the United Nations and all basic norms and principles of international law and threaten international peace and security. We regret that the United States has obstructed the draft press statement of Security Council proposed by Algeria, which calls for an impartial, transparent, and international investigation. This responsible behaviour by US is unacceptable, reckless, and contradicts the international community’s will. Mr. President, despite the overwhelming support by the international community, the US, as astonished supporter of the occupying regime, has once more chosen to blind its eye to the reality and made cynical efforts to hinder the realisation of the noble aspiration of Palestinian people for full membership. However, today’s vote shows how the United States is isolated in its unconditional support of the Israeli regime. We trust that today’s vote sends a clear message to the Security Council. Upon the adoption of this resolution, we hope that the Security Council will be able to reconsider its previous stance regarding the Palestinian request for full membership. Mr. President, the Islamic Republic of Iran firmly believes that support for the cause of Palestine and Palestinian people must continue until they can realise their fundamental rights, in particular their right to self-determination, and the establishment of an independent State of Palestine in all occupied territories with Al-Quds as Sharif as its capital. As we have stated before, we are of the view that the return of Palestinian refugee to their homeland and the holding of a referendum on the self-determination represents the most effective and durable solution to the Palestinian question. Through a referendum, Palestinian Muslim, Jews, and Christians will be able to choose their own political system and enjoy their right fairly and equally. In conclusion, my delegation voted in favour of the resolution and consider it as a demonstration of international community’s strong support for the cause of Palestine, particularly the Palestinian people’s realisation of their inalienable right to self-determination. While we welcome the adoption of the resolution, our hearts go out to the people of Gaza and Rafah, who endure the ongoing atrocities committed by Israel. Iran remains steadfast in advocating for the establishment of a sustainable ceasefire, recognising it as an urgent and dispensable requirement of the Gaza well-being at this critical juncture. Finally, we would like to put on record that our support for the resolution is without prejudice to our longstanding and constant principle position on issue related to the question of Palestine and the non-recognition of Israeli regime. I thank you, Mr. President.
I should like to thank the representative of the Islamic Republic of Iran, and I now invite the representative of Chechnya to take the floor.
Mr. President, let me write at the outset, reiterate Chechnya’s full support for the people of the West Bank and Gaza in their pursuit of political aspirations for their own future statehood. For this to be viable, however, it must be a result of a comprehensive peace agreement guaranteeing security, political stability, and democratic development for both Israel and Palestine. First and foremost, addressing the deep humanitarian crisis in Gaza is a matter of great urgency, as it is a critical element in any meaningful process leading to the future Palestinian state. Indeed, parts of the Strip are still under the control of Hamas, which launched its horrific terrorist attack on Israel on the 7th of October, triggering this war and resulting in its tragic consequences for thousands of civilians. We strongly support the joint statement issued by the eighteen member states leaders on the 25th of April, which calls on Hamas to immediately release all hostages and pave the way for a ceasefire. Mr. President, today, we voted on a draft resolution that seeks to enhance the Palestinian status at the United Nations. after its application for a full UN membership was not recommended by the Security Council. The people in the region deserve the prospect of a peaceful solution that will permanently resolve the conflict. But neither the UN membership nor the enhanced rights at the United Nations alone can bring peace and prosperity to the Palestinians. Achieving peace requires more. It requires courage to come together at the negotiating table and make difficult political decisions and compromises. And that is actually what we should all strive for. In this regard, it is vital to reestablish a political horizon towards a two-state solution. A negotiated agreement remains the only viable path to achieving lasting security and peace for all. We also encourage the region to embark on a path of cooperation, including through the Abraham Accords, to foster a better future for the Middle East. This General Assembly resolution intends to bypass a highly complex political process through a decision that could potentially sow further divisions and hinder peace talks in an already very fragile conflict situation. Furthermore, it attempts to circumvent the established legal procedures for admission of new members to the United Nations family by awarding rights and privileges of a member state to an observer. This is in contradiction with the intention of the UN Charter. Mr. President, precisely for these reasons, Czechia was not in a position to support a draft resolution, and we voted no. I thank you.
I thank the representative of Czechia, and I now invite the representative of the United States to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. President Biden has been clear that sustainable peace in the region can be achieved only through a two-state solution with Israel's security guaranteed, where Israelis and Palestinians can live side by side with equal measures of freedom and dignity. It remains the U.S. view that unilateral measures at the UN and on the ground will not advance this goal. This General Assembly resolution was no exception, and so the United States voted no. Our vote does not reflect opposition to Palestinian statehood. We have been very clear that we support it and seek to advance it meaningfully. Instead, it is an acknowledgement that statehood will come only from a process that involves direct negotiations between the parties. There is no other path that guarantees Israel's security and future as a democratic Jewish state. There is no other path that guarantees Palestinians can live in peace and with dignity in a state of their own. And there is no other path that leads to regional integration between Israel and all its Arab neighbors, including Saudi Arabia. The United States is committed to intensifying its engagement with the Palestinians and the rest of the region to advance a political settlement that will create a path to Palestinian statehood and subsequent membership in the United Nations. This resolution does not resolve the concerns about the Palestinian membership application raised in April in the Security Council through the Admissions Committee process. And should the Security Council take up the Palestinians' membership application as a result of this resolution, there will be a similar outcome. Additionally, the draft resolution does not alter the status of the Palestinians as a non-member state observer mission. Even this unproductive text makes that explicit. As a result of this vote, the Palestinian non-member state observer mission has not gained the right to vote in the General Assembly. It also has not gained the right to put forward candidates in UN organs or to be elected as a member of the Security Council. In short, the Palestinian non-member state observer mission does not have the same standing as a member state after this vote. In the meantime, the United States will continue to oppose measures that undermine the prospect of a two-state solution. This includes any actions that violate the principles that Secretary Blinken has affirmed repeatedly, that Gaza cannot be a platform for terrorism, that there should be no Israeli reoccupation of Gaza, and that the size of Gaza's territory should not be reduced. We believe a two-state solution, coupled with these elements, is the best way to achieve a durable peace in the region, along with security for Israelis and Palestinians. It remains the U.S. view that the most expeditious path towards statehood and UN membership for the Palestinian people is through direct negotiations between Israel and the Palestinian Authority with the support of the United States and other partners. Thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the delegate of the United States, and I now invite the distinguished delegate of France to take the floor.
Monsieur le Président. President, France voted in favor of the draft resolution proposed by the United Arab Emirates. This provides new rights to observe a state of Palestine within the United Nations. The clarifications provided in the resolution regarding the right to vote and the right to be elected, which are the prerogatives of member states alone, is something that's welcome. France recalls that the procedure for admitting a new member state is defined by the states, by the Charter, and it must not be circumvented. France is in favor of the admission of Palestine as a full member of the United Nations, and that's why we voted in favor of the resolution presented by Algeria at the Security Council. It is high time to put the work of the United Nations with a perspective of overall political solution to the Israeli political conflict on the basis of this two-state solution. This is the only way of meeting the security needs of Israel and the legitimate aspirations of Palestinians' state. This is the thinking behind the resolution that we presented to the Security Council. We call on all its members to support it and to support a view to peace. President, France condemns the terrorist attacks of Hamas and other terrorist groups on the seventh of October. France continues to demand a ceasefire and the release of all hostages. It continues to demand full humanitarian access too. The offensive that has started in Rafah risks leaving, causing numerous victims and displacing people. At a time where nowhere can be deemed safe today in Gaza, there is a risk further of disrupting delivery of aid. France is clearly opposed to this operation. France condemns Hamas' attack on the Karamshalom crossing point and recall that all parties must do everything they can to protect civilians and guarantee access for humanitarian aid. President, it is high time to mobilize for a political solution. Thank you very much.
I thank the delegate of France, and I now invite the distinguished delegate of Finland to take the floor.
Finland abstained in the vote on the General Assembly Resolution ES-10/L30. The tragic events of the past months have once again demonstrated that lasting peace in the Middle East requires a political solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. Finland considers the two-state solution the only sustainable way to guarantee the security and the rights of both peoples and to achieve sustainable peace. The entire international community must strive to advance this goal. Sustainable peace requires the realization of the rights of the Palestinian people to self-determination in their own independent state. Finland has been a reliable partner to the Palestinians for decades in supporting the construction of the Palestinian state, both politically and through development cooperation. The international community now needs to create clear steps towards a Palestinian state. Palestine's UN membership is one of these steps. It is of utmost importance that the membership is not merely symbolic but comes as part of a broad-based plan that produces concrete improvements to the situation of the Palestinians and the security of the whole region. Unfortunately, the international community has not yet agreed on such a plan. Finland wants to see an independent, internationally recognized Palestinian state as a full member of the United Nations as soon as possible. Despite the difficult situation, it is important that all peoples in the region become aware of the necessity of the two-state solution. The leadership of both parties must act in a manner that makes the two-state solution credible in the eyes of the citizens. Mr. President, the protection of civilians must immediately become the highest priority. Israel must stop all its illegal activities in the West Bank and release the Palestinian revenues it is withholding. The Palestinian government needs to implement its reform program. We all must acknowledge openly that there is no return to the status quo ante of seventh of October. Finland continues to call for a sustainable ceasefire in Gaza and the immediate release of all hostages. Ultimately, the benefits of the two-state model clearly outweigh disadvantages for all residents in the region. The peoples of Israel and Palestine deserve a better, secure future, and the Palestinians have the right to take decisions on their own affairs. Thank you, Mr. President.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Finland, and I now invite the distinguished representative of Australia to take the floor.
I thank you, Mr. President. Australia welcomes this resolution's unwavering support for the two-state solution of Israel and Palestine living side by side in peace and security within recognized borders. This is a clear rejection of the goals and methods of Hamas. A two-state solution, Israel and Palestine, is the opposite of what Hamas wants. We condemn Hamas' terrorist attack on Israel and call for the immediate release of all hostages. Australia has long believed a two-state solution offers the only hope for breaking the endless cycle of violence and achieving lasting peace. Like many member states, Australia has been frustrated by the lack of progress. There is a role for the international community to build momentum, set expectations that parties resume negotiations for tangible progress, and to support efforts for a political process. The resolution does not provide membership of the United Nations and retains the status of the permanent observer mission with a modest extension of additional rights. We appreciated our engagement with member states and the Palestinian observer mission to ensure that this was clear. The resolution expresses the General Assembly's aspiration for full Palestinian membership of the United Nations, something which must ultimately be recommended by the Security Council, consistent with the Charter. While this resolution is not what we would propose, it is for all these reasons that Australia voted yes. Like many other countries, our vote for this resolution is not bilateral recognition of Palestinian statehood. Nevertheless, Australia no longer accepts that recognition can only come at the end of the peace process. We have been clear there is no role for Hamas in a future Palestinian state. Such a state cannot be in a position to threaten Israel's security. Reform of the Palestinian Authority is required, and direct negotiations will be needed on final status issues, including Jerusalem and borders. We have listened to Israel's concerns. Australia will always remain committed to Israel's right to exist in peace and security. We believe a two-state solution is the only way to assure this. We know this vote won't resolve the immediate crisis. A humanitarian ceasefire in Gaza is needed urgently. The catastrophic humanitarian situation must be addressed, and Hamas must release all hostages. Thank you.
I give the floor next to the distinguished delegate of Germany after thanking the distinguished delegate of Australia for his statement. Germany, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Germany firmly believes in two states, Israel and Palestine, for two peoples in the Middle East. We share the goal of a Palestinian state. We fully support Palestinians' right to self-determination. Every child, every family deserves to live in peace, in prosperity, and in dignity. And we want the Palestinian people to have their own state. Germany has worked towards that for years, and we will relentlessly continue to do so. Today, immediate action is required, supported by collective international efforts to stop the fighting, to release the hostages, to ensure and guarantee security for Israelis and Palestinians alike, to provide humanitarian assistance, and to end the suffering and the destruction. Without such immediate steps, a Palestinian state will not become a reality. But we want a Palestinian state to exist in reality. Unfortunately, today's vote in the General Assembly will not be able to create a viable Palestinian state, nor will it make peace. If immediate full membership ended all the suffering we are witnessing, we would have today wholeheartedly voted yes. Only direct negotiations between Israelis and Palestinians will lead to sustainable peace in the Middle East and to a two-state reality. And this is why we have abstained today. At this moment of time, let us focus on what is necessary to open an effective road to peace and security for the region, for Israelis and Palestinians alike. Germany is working relentlessly towards this goal. In close coordination with our partners in the region, we are focusing on creating the conditions necessary for a two-state solution. To be very clear, and on this, many in this room seem to agree, full UN membership of a Palestinian state is not the beginning nor the end of a political process towards a two-state solution, but it is an integral part of such a political process. Israelis and Palestinians must start agreeing on tangible steps, steps that allow both peoples to live in dignity, security, side by side, steps to end the occupation and to prevent violence and incitement. Today, we stand against unilateral measures undermining the prospect for a two-state solution, namely illegal settlement activities in the occupied territories and unprecedented levels of settler violence. We call upon the government of Israel to do its part to keep the two-state solution viable. At the same time, Palestinians need to lay the ground for a viable and legitimate state structure. What is needed is an effective, unified Palestinian authority determined to live in peace and security with Israel as good neighbors. This will require continuous substantial efforts from all stakeholders. The international community stands ready to take responsibility to ensure that the Brazilian Authority can effectively fulfill this task and guarantee security for Israelis and Palestinians alike. What happened on the seventh of October, 2023, must never happen again. Israel's legitimate security concerns must be met, and Palestinians as well as Israelis must be able to live in peace and security. Germany stands ready to support it. Mr. President, in today's important vote, delegations have taken different decisions. None of us is taking this lightly. We all seek to contribute to the same objective: peace and security for every child in Palestine, peace and security for every child in Israel, peace and security for the whole region, and especially a viable two-state solution. Let us therefore join forces to work towards peace. The horrible war in Gaza is a stark reminder that this is the only way forward. Ending the killing in Gaza is of the utmost importance. Hamas must end the terror. This would stop the war. All hostages must be released immediately and unconditionally. Israel must finally allow for humanitarian assistance to reach all innocent men, women, and children in Gaza now. We also call upon Israel We also call upon Israel to refrain from further escalation in Rafa and to do everything in its power to protect the lives of civilians in Gaza. As every country has the right to self-defense, every country also has the obligation to protect civilians. We cannot wait for the day when the Palestinian people finally have their own state, not just a seat behind a nameplate at the UN. This is what we are working for, and we believe we can only do this together. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Germany for his statement, and I now invite the distinguished representative of Italy to take the floor.
Mr. President, Italy is a firm supporter of the principle two-people-two-states and shares the goal of a comprehensive lasting peace that could only, and I stress only, be achieved on the basis of a two-state solution with Israel and Palestine living side by side in peace and security within agreed, recognized borders. We believe such a goal must be achieved through direct negotiations between the parties. We have doubts that today's approval of the resolution will contribute to the objective of reaching a lasting solution to the conflict. That is why we decided to abstain. With the brutal attacks perpetrated by Hamas on October 7th and the ensuing conflict in the Gaza Strip, reaching the objective of the two-state solution has become more urgent than ever. That is the only way to avoid the eternal cycles of action and reaction that have poisoned generations of Israeli and Palestinian's life. There will be no security for Israel without the existence of a sovereign, viable Palestinian state, a Palestinian state whose territory should cover both the West Bank and Gaza and that should be effectively governed by a revamped Palestinian Authority. The importance of restoring a political horizon in order to respond to the legitimate aspirations of the Palestinian people should guide our action in the medium term. In the short term, priority should be given to resolve the catastrophic, tragic humanitarian crisis in the Gaza Strip. Within this context, we urge Israel to halt its plans already underway to start a ground operation in Rafa. As also mentioned by the President of the Italian Republic in front of this very assembly three days ago, Italy supports the Secretary General's call for military operations at Rafa to be avoided, given the painfully tragic consequences that they would further have on Palestinian civilians. At the same time, we also urge Hamas to release all the hostages unconditionally. Italy is doing its part to alleviate the immense suffering of the Palestinian population on the brink of a famine. Recently, a foreign minister launched the initiative Food for Gaza in collaboration with FAO, WFP, and IFRC, aimed at better meeting the urgent demand for food security and primary health of the civilian population. We are also ready to resume our funding to UNRWA earmarked to specific projects. We believe that the agency continues to play a pivotal role in the delivery of humanitarian assistance, playing a stabilizing role in the wider region. Once the emergency phase is over, Italy stands ready to do its part, together with all its partners, to contribute to relaunch a political horizon. I thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Germany, and I now invite the distinguished representative of Austria to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Austria abstained on draft resolution L30rev1 entitled "Admission of New Members to the United Nations." Here's why: the admission of new members to the UN is a political and also a legal step. In general, it is one that we encourage deeply. For Austria, the United Nations is the paramount global organization where all states of the world seek solutions together to common challenges. Regarding the Middle East peace process, Austria therefore fully supports the vision set out in this resolution for two states, Israel and Palestine, living side by side in peace and security within recognized borders based on the pre-1967 borders. Austrian political leaders have consistently called for that. In January, Foreign Minister Schallenberg at the UN Security Council called on the international community to do more to achieve this aim by laying the foundations for a life in peace and dignity for Israelis and Palestinians alike. Austria remains committed to this goal, but we believe that genuine peace and security for Israelis and Palestinians alike can only be achieved through a political process. A mere symbolic recognition of Palestine will not bring about the changes that Palestinians aspire to and that they deserve. For this reason, Austria abstained on the draft resolution today and calls instead on both sides to return to the negotiation table. Austria stands ready to support efforts that can rebuild hope for peace and categorically rejects any unilateral attempts from any side to undermine the prospects for a two-state solution. Thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Austria, and I now invite the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom to take the floor.
Thank you, President. The United Kingdom remains firmly committed to a two-state solution that guarantees security and stability for both the Israeli and the Palestinian people. As we said in the Security Council last month, we're abstaining on this resolution because we believe that the first step towards achieving this goal is resolving the immediate crisis in Gaza. The fastest way to end the conflict is to secure a deal which gets the hostages out and allows for a pause in the fighting in Gaza. We must then work together to turn that pause into a sustainable, permanent ceasefire. Setting out a horizon for a Palestinian state should be one of the vital conditions for moving from a pause in fighting to a sustainable ceasefire. Recognizing a Palestinian state, including at the UN, should be part of that process. As my Foreign Secretary has said, while this shouldn't be at the start of a new process, it doesn't have to be at the very end of the process. President, we remain deeply concerned about the prospect of a major operation in Rafa. We are clear that we would not support this unless there is a very clear plan for how to protect civilians who must be safe and able to access food, water, and medical care. We have not seen that plan, so in these circumstances, we would not support a major operation in Rafa. The UK is doing all it can to reach a long-term solution to this crisis. In addition to our support for a deal which would secure a pause in the fighting and the immediate release of all hostages, we are pushing as hard as we can to get aid to Palestinian civilians, working with partners to de-escalate the situation in the region, and building momentum towards a lasting peace. The UK has offered the Palestinian Authority our support as the new Palestinian government implements much-needed reforms. An effective Palestinian Authority is vital for lasting peace and progress towards a two-state solution. And just as the PA must act, so too must Israel. This means releasing frozen funds, halting settlement expansion, and holding to account those responsible for extremist settler violence. Last week, the UK announced a second package of sanctions targeting individuals and groups directly responsible for egregious violence against Palestinian civilians. The Israeli authorities must put a stop to this. President, in conclusion, we will continue to work urgently to bring the Gaza conflict to a sustainable end as quickly as possible and to build a credible and irreversible pathway towards a two-state solution and lasting peace. I thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of the United Kingdom for his statement, and I now give to the floor the distinguished representative of Iceland.
Mr. President, in 2011, Iceland and Palestine established full diplomatic relations after the Icelandic parliament passed a resolution in support of recognizing the state of Palestine as a sovereign state. Since then, Iceland's position on Palestinian statehood has been clear. Iceland has consistently called for a two-state solution where both Israel and Palestine live side by side in peace and security and mutual recognition. Therefore, we support Palestine's full membership of the United Nations and the call for the Security Council to reconsider the matter favorably. We also call on the Council to do more, to live up to its mandate and address the Middle East peace process. This is why we voted in favor of today's resolution. Mr. President, just as Iceland has consistently condemned Hamas's past indiscriminate terrorist attacks, we condemned in the strongest terms the horrific attack on Israel on October the 7th. We continue to call for the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages taken in this most fatal attack on Jews since the Holocaust. In 1947, Iceland's first permanent representative to the United Nations was instrumental in passing Resolution 181, envisioning the formation of independent Arab and US states. Subsequently, Iceland supported Israel's admission to the UN in 1949. Ever since, Iceland has reiterated Israel's clear right to defend itself in line with the UN Charter and international law, including international humanitarian law. We also recognize the legitimate security concerns of Israel. Israel's right to exist is beyond debate. We can never forget the horrors of the Holocaust, which led to the creation of the state of Israel, especially now as we face extreme increase in antisemitism. At the same time, we recognize the injustice of Israel's illegal settlements in the West Bank and East Jerusalem and the blockade of Gaza. We once again call on Israel to put an end to this and take action to stop settler violence. Freedom of media also needs to be respected. Mr. President, ultimately, international law provides states with rights and obligations. Both are sacred. Iceland expects this two states, Israel and Palestine, to enjoy and respect both. In the past months, the world has witnessed hindered access for humanitarian aid, water, and power to Gaza. There have been reports of civilian infrastructure and hospitals being used for purposes that can deprive them of a protection under international humanitarian law. And we have witnessed totally unacceptable losses of the lives of civilians, children, aid and health workers, journalists, and UNRWA staff. All of these constitute serious violations of international humanitarian law. The figures are shocking. After six months of war, over 35,000 people have died in Gaza. More than 2 million civilians are desperately in need of lifesaving aid. Civilian infrastructure is in ruins. And if Israel's last-scale military campaign in Rafa materializes, the situation is bound to get even worse. We therefore urge Israel to halt its operations in Rafa. Iceland condemns all violations of international law, including international humanitarian law, and again, international law provides states with rights and obligations. Both are sacred. We must restore respect for international law, including humanitarian law, which binds all parties to armed conflicts and cannot be derogated from. The civilians in Gaza must be protected in accordance with the legally binding orders issued by the International Court of Justice in Die Heik. Security Council Resolutions 2712, 2720, and 2748 must be implemented. Mr. President, mindful of how seemingly insurmountable grievances have been overcome during our lifetimes, there is hope for the two states to live side by side in peace. The people of Palestine and Israel deserve to live in peace and security in prosperous and democratic societies. They deserve to live without fear of aggression or terrorist attacks. We therefore call on Israel and Hamas to urgently agree to and implement a sustained ceasefire and command all efforts to try to bring an agreement to fruition. Today's resolution will not immediately change the situation on the ground, but it recognizes that peace will not be achieved through unilateral means. It calls for more to be done and determines that there is no better path towards peace than the two-state solution. In this context, Mr. President, Palestine should qualify and be welcomed as the 194th UN member state, and I thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished delegate of Iceland for his statement, and I now invite the distinguished delegate of Romania to take the floor.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Mr. President, Romania abstained on the resolution on admission of new members to the United Nations. Romania has recognized Palestine in 1988, and we remain supportive of the two-state solution as the only option for a just and lasting resolution of the Palestinian-Israeli conflict. In the 36 years since the recognizing Palestine, we have been standing by the Palestinian people and provided support throughout the time to the civilians, including during the ongoing crisis, and we will continue to support the Palestinians in line with international law, international and international humanitarian law. As a longstanding supporter of the Charter, Romania wishes to highlight that admission of a state to UN membership will be, quote, "affected by a decision of the General Assembly upon the recommendation of the Security Council," unquote. We are hence of the view that the Security Council needs to consider the matter first and reach a positive recommendation before the General Assembly can decide. We need to preserve the complementarity and sequencing of action between the General Assembly and Security Council in line with the UN Charter. In our view, the two-state solution remains the only way for bringing just and lasting peace in the Middle East, based on international law, relevant UN Security Council resolutions, the Madrid Principles, including Land for Peace, the agreements previously reached by the parties, and the RAPIS Initiative, with the state of Israel and an independent, democratic, contiguous, sovereign, and viable state of Palestine living side by side in peace and security and mutual recognition. UN membership for Palestine is part of this larger framework conducive to peace and stability. The international community, including the United Nations, need to redouble efforts to create the necessary conditions. Thank you, Mr. President.
I should like to thank the distinguished delegate of Romania, and I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Latvia.
Mr. President, Latvia abstained on the resolution on admission of new members of the United Nations because we continue to believe official recognition of a Palestinian state should only be conducted in the framework of a negotiated agreement in accordance with international parameters. Latvia recognizes the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination, including the right to their independent state of Palestine. Latvia remains committed to the two-state solution of Israel and Palestine living side by side in peace and security within recognized borders based on the pre-1967 borders to guarantee sustainable peace. Our vote shall not be interpreted as support to the ongoing crisis, including practices that violate international law and international humanitarian law. We fully recognize that more than 34,000 Palestinians have perished, and the remaining residents of Gaza continue to face life-threatening danger as well as humanitarian catastrophe. This crisis must be addressed without delay, ensuring immediate humanitarian pause and sustainable ceasefire, unconditional release of hostages, and the provision of unhindered humanitarian assistance. and the provision of unhindered humanitarian assistance at scale to the Palestinian people to end the suffering now. We thank the Palestinian mission and other interlocutors for their constructive efforts to improve the text of the resolution to enable the widest possible support among U N member states. Therefore, we call on the Security Council to reconsider the matter on the U N membership of Palestine as soon as possible. To conclude, we believe that this is the time for the international community to redouble efforts towards overcoming the current crisis and reviving the Middle East peace process aimed at achieving the two-state solution. Meanwhile, it is important to enhance political and practical support to the Palestinian people and the Palestinian Authority as their official representative at the foundation of future State of Palestine. I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Latvia, and I now offer the floor to the distinguished representative of Greece.
Mr. President, the horrific terrorist attacks against Israel on October 7, 2023, the suffering of innocent civilians both in Israel and Gaza, as well as the wider instability in the Middle East that ensued, reminded us that the price of inaction of the international community is too high. Our positive vote today is in line with our longstanding principle position that the resolution of the Palestinian question should be mutually agreed on the basis of a two-state solution, an independent and viable Palestinian state living side by side with the State of Israel in peace and security in line with relevant U N resolutions. We strongly believe that creating a viable political horizon for the Palestinian people while also guaranteeing Israel's security is the best way to end violence and to combat extremist and radical ideologies. We believe that the resolution adopted today can contribute to the creation of an international political environment to achieve these goals. We would like to clarify that the vote of Greece today is without prejudice to the membership of Palestine in the United Nations in accordance with the U N Charter as well as to its present status in our bilateral relations. I thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Greece for his statement, and I now invite the distinguished representative of Luxembourg to take the floor.
Monsieur le Président.
Mr. President, Luxembourg voted in favor of the resolution presented by the United Arab Emirates by which the General Assembly is asking the Security Council to favorably consider the establishment of the State of Palestine as a member of the United Nations and confer additional rights to the State of Palestine waiting while it waits its admission. By voting in favor of this resolution, Luxembourg made a clear choice. We voted in favor of peace and in favor of a two-state solution. This is the only solution which can meet the security needs in the long run for Israel and the legitimate aspirations of the Palestinians to a state. We would like to thank Palestine for having strengthened the language of the resolution, thereby reaffirming the support of the General Assembly to a two-state solution with Israel and Palestine living side by side in peace and insecurity within recognized borders based on the pre-1967 borders. The resolution that we just adopted enjoys a broad majority and provides new impetus to all of those that are committed to peace. Our Minister of Foreign Affairs will be going to Israel and Palestine at the end of this month in order to support those efforts. We commend the work underway in the Security Council, at France's initiative, in order to relaunch diplomatic action in favor of a two-state solution. We hope that today's vote will bring us closer to that political horizon. In parallel to this, Luxembourg is currently working with its European partners on the issue of recognition of the State of Palestine. We see recognition as an additional measure to support the two-state solution. The vote this morning also provides us with a glimmer of hope for the people of Gaza and to the families of the hostages. We continue to stand by the side of all victims, and we reiterate our urgent appeal for the immediate and unconditional release of all hostages and for a sustainable lasting ceasefire with full humanitarian access. The General Assembly stated it clearly in its resolution of 12 December 2023, and we express our gratitude to Palestine for having inserted a reference to this resolution in the resolution we just adopted. Mr. President, the war in Gaza and the situation in the West Bank, marked by ongoing policy of settlements and extreme violence of the settlers, clearly shows more than ever the need to work for a political solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. Protection of civilians and the respect of international law and international humanitarian law should be guaranteed at all times and in all places. Luxembourg calls for the full implementation of Resolutions 2712, 2720, and 2728 of the Security Council and the resolutions of this assembly and conservative measures indicated to the State of Israel by the International Court of Justice handed down on the 26th January and in 28 March this past year. We urge the Israeli government to not launch an offensive in Rafa. As underscored by the Secretary General, another such assault would be a disaster given the incalculable number of civilian victims it would incur. Tens of thousands of civilians have been compelled to flee once again without knowing where they can go to be sure and safe. The repercussions in Rafa would be felt well beyond the Gaza Strip and occupied West Bank and in the whole region. Mr. President, Luxembourg is concerned and disturbed by the famine that is spreading throughout Gaza due to the blockade on humanitarian access. And we're shocked by the information that state that there's been a discovery of what has happened with the Nassar Hospital and Al-Shifa Hospital, the attacks of armed forces from Israel targeting civilian schools, hospitals, United Nations facilities, and other civilian infrastructures. These attacks are intolerable, and attacks on humanitarian workers and journalists are unacceptable. Luxembourg would like to pay tribute to all the humanitarian workers, to the staff of UNRWA, the United Nations, the NGOs, and the journalists who have been killed in Gaza. Accountability should be provided for all crimes committed and justice for all victims. It is appropriate to recall here that intentionally attacking humanitarian actors and using famine as a war tactic are war crimes as set forth in the Rome Statute of the International Criminal Court. In this regard, Luxembourg condemns, in the firmest terms, any threat and any act of intimidation against the International Criminal Court, the prosecutor, and all of its staff. The court plays a key role in fighting impunity and should be able to act with full independence. Combating impunity is not incompatible with the quest for a political solution. To the contrary, we are deeply convinced that justice is an ingredient which is indispensable for lasting peace in the region. And for that reason, Luxembourg joins the appeals of others for independent investigations to be conducted to shed light on all violations of international humanitarian law and human rights in Gaza and in the occupied Palestinian territories and to shed light on the atrocities perpetrated by Hamas and other terrorist groups on the 7th of October 2023. Mr. President, at this critical moment for international peace and security and for the Middle East, Luxembourg reaffirms its full support to the Secretary General Antonio Guterres and the United Nations staff, who are committed unwaveringly with courage to come to the assistance of the peoples who are affected by the Israeli-Palestinian conflict, to put an end to the conflict and to prevent a regional escalation of the conflict. We call upon all member states, especially Israel, to refrain from any form of reprisal, intimidation, or denigration geared to the United Nations and targeting its personnel. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Luxembourg, and I now invite the distinguished representative of Bulgaria to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Bulgaria was among the first to recognize the State of Palestine back in 1988. We have consistently supported the legitimate aspirations of the Palestinian people pertaining to their right to self-determination, and we are convinced that the Palestinian people, like all peoples, have the right to a sovereign and independent state which can participate in the multilateral system on an equal footing with all other states in line with the principles of the U N Charter and the international rules-based order. Our commitment to a just and comprehensive resolution of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict based on the two-state solution is firmer than ever. Given the current political context, the resolution just adopted should have been aimed at facilitating in its entirety the achievement of this comprehensive goal. When it comes to the annex, the resolution just adopted contains some elements which need further clarification from the point of view of procedural rules and established practice. Therefore, Bulgaria was not in a position to support the draft and abstained on it. Thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Bulgaria, and I now invite the distinguished representative of Tunisia to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tunisia voted in favor of the draft resolution to reaffirm our support of the legitimate natural right of the State of Palestine to full membership in the United Nations, especially that Palestine meets all the requirements of this membership as stipulated in Article IV of the U N Charter. This right is an inherent right of the legitimate right of the Palestinians to self-determination. It would allow the State of Palestine to pursue its efforts along the international community to end occupation, to put an end to the crimes and genocide, to the oppression and abuse against the Palestinian people for seven decades now. The fact that the draft resolution garnered the support of more than two-thirds of the member states represents a clear message confirming the right of the Palestinian state to occupy its natural place among the wider membership. It reaffirms the need to respect the U N Charter and the principles of right, justice, and international law. Mr. President, Tunisia reaffirms its steadfast and principled support for the right of the Palestinian people to restore their legitimate, inalienable, impreceptible rights, most notably their right to self-determination and to the establishment of their independent, fully sovereign state on all the land of Palestine with Al-Quds al-Sharif as its capital. Tunisia calls upon the international community and the Security Council once again to shoulder their historic legal and moral responsibilities to put an end to the ongoing massacres against the Palestinian people in Gaza and in the rest of the occupied Palestinian territories, to establish the truth concerning the mass graves that were discovered, and to stop providing the occupation forces with weapons. These massacres and crimes that have crossed all the lines and which are being perpetrated by the occupation forces which persist in abusing the Palestinian people and violating their rights amidst an ongoing international silence and a lack of accountability, owing to the special support Israel is receiving in the Security Council, this support emboldened it to ignore international law and U N resolutions. We call for an immediate end of these crimes and to holding the occupation accountable, to also hold accountable those responsible for genocides and war crimes. We beseech the international community to stand firmly and seriously away from any political considerations or double standards and to prevent another crime against more than 1.5 million Palestinians that were forcibly displaced to Rafa to allow the delivery of humanitarian assistance and all basic necessities that are denied by the occupation forces which are using starvation as a means of warfare. In conclusion, we reaffirm that the right of the State of Palestine to full membership in the United Nations cannot be doubted, denied, or misinterpreted. It is a historic, inalienable, established right that was adopted by the overwhelming majority of the international community as one of the most important pillars of a just, comprehensive, and lasting solution to the just Palestinian cause. It will restore rights to their owners. In this context, we call upon the Security Council to reconsider favorably the full membership of the State of Palestine. This would be a first step towards justifying a situation that runs counters to the principles of right, justice, and the purposes of the United Nations. Thank you, President.
I thank the distinguished representative of Tunisia, and I now give the floor to the distinguished representative of Estonia.
Mr. President, Estonia voted in favor of the resolution in order to reaffirm our unwavering support to a just and comprehensive resolution of the Israeli-Palestinian conflict based on a two-state solution with the State of Israel and an independent, democratic, contiguous, sovereign, and viable State of Palestine living side by side in peace and security. We support revitalizing a political horizon and reinvigorating international efforts towards this goal. Estonia supports granting the State of Palestine additional rights and privileges for participation in the work of a General Assembly without setting a precedent and in full conformity with the U N Charter, i.e. excluding the right to vote and putting forward candidacies to United Nations organs and maintaining the status of a non-member observer state. Estonia's vote in favor does not constitute bilateral recognition of a State of Palestine. I thank you.
I should like to thank the representative of Estonia, and I now call upon the representative of Cyprus.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. President, Cyprus has voted in favor of the resolution which was adopted today. At the same time, Cyprus wishes to underline that the adoption of this resolution constitutes an exceptional case and shall not establish any precedent for the future. Cyprus remains unwaveringly committed to the United Nations Charter and international law, which we all have an obligation to uphold and to protect. In this regard, we strongly call on all member states to respect and safeguard adherence to the U N Charter and the exercise of the authority and responsibilities of the U N Security Council, including concerning admission of new members to the United Nations. Cyprus has recognized the State of Palestine since 1988. The Palestinian cause for self-determination should in no way be associated with the heinous acts of the Hamas terrorist group, which does not represent the Palestinian people and which we have on numerous occasions unequivocally condemned. Cyprus remains committed to the goal of a comprehensive, lasting, and sustainable peace in the form of a two-state solution as the only viable path to peace and security in the Middle East. Palestinians and Israelis have an equal right to live in safety, dignity, and peace. I thank you, Mr. President.
I thank the representative of Cyprus, and I now invite the representative of Slovakia to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm taking the floor to deliver the explanation of Slovakia's vote on draft resolution L3D Rev 1. Slovakia voted in favor of this draft resolution enhancing the participation rights and privileges of the State of Palestine in the United Nations General Assembly. At the same time, we acknowledge that the way towards the membership of the State of Palestine in the United Nations is through agreements that are reached by the parties and after receiving a positive recommendation of the admission from the U N Security Council. Mr. President, my delegation has voted for this draft resolution with the understanding that the modalities foreseen in the resolution are in accordance with the rules and procedure of the United Nations General Assembly and the United Nations Charter. Our decision was guided by the desire to strengthen the cause of peace between Israelis and Palestinians and our unicoled support for the two-state solution. I strongly emphasize here that Slovakia opposes any attempt to isolate Israel in the United Nations. Mr. President, as Mr. President, as we have indicated on other occasions, we condemned in the most forceful way the atrocious terrorist attacks of Hamas on Israel and recognise the right of Israel to defend itself. In the same strong manner, we deplore all loss of civilian life and reiterate the importance of ensuring protection of all civilians at all times in line with international humanitarian law. The recent cycle of violence in the Middle East presents a stark reminder of the need for the resumption and acceleration of the peace process leading to a two-state solution to the Israeli-Palestinian conflict and sustainable peace in the region. We cannot return to the pre-October 7 status quo. To conclude, I want to say that we are worried about the surge in anti-Semitic and Islamophobic incidents in the world since the start of Israel-Hamas war. There is no excuse for anti-Semitism nor for anti-Muslim hatred. Thank you for your attention.
I thank the delegate of Slovakia for his statement, and I now invite the Florida delegate of Poland.
Mr. President, Poland understands and has supported the Palestinian people's aspiration for self-determination and statehood for decades. We recognise the Palestinian declaration of independence in 1988. We also remain on the side of peace and stability in the Middle East. Both Palestinians and Israelis have lived in fear and suffering for much too long. Mr. President, our country is committed and ready to work tirelessly with the parties and regional and international partners to promote a return to a meaningful diplomatic process leading to a negotiated two-state solution built upon the internationally agreed parameters. The solution which will fulfil the aspiration of both sides, the solution where the state of Israel and independent, democratic, contiguous, sovereign and viable state of Palestine live side by side in peace and security and mutual recognition. In that context, we stress that terrorism aimed at the civilian population is never justified and cannot be tolerated under any circumstances, and that every country has the right to defend itself and its citizens against terrorism in compliance with the international law. This is why Poland constantly raises these issues at the UN and all other relevant fora. However, Mr. President, we notice with great concern that the perspective of implementation of the two-state solution seems be further than ever. Thus, we need to continue supporting Palestinian statehood in accordance with international law. We consider the General Assembly resolution on Palestine's membership in the United Nations as a right and important step in this direction, and this is why we have decided to vote in favour of the document. Mr. President, as a longstanding advocate of the principle of equal rights and self-determination of peoples, as stipulated in the UN Charter, Poland is glad that the adopted document provides additional rights and privileges to the state of Palestine. We perceive this enhanced status as the next step in Palestine's pursuit to a full UN membership in accordance with Article IV of the UN Charter. We believe that this pursuit is an inalienable right of the Palestinian people. We also believe it is only realistic way to bring the lasting peace and security that both Palestinians and Israelis fully deserve, and I thank you.
I thank the distinguished representative of Poland for his statement, and I now offer the floor to the distinguished representative of Liechtenstein.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm delivering this explanation of vote after the vote on draft resolution A/ES10/L30. Mr. President, we meet today as a result of the veto cast in the Security Council of Palestine's application for UN membership. We were also invited to express ourselves on the issue, in so doing putting on record the position of the membership, including by recommending to the Council to reconsider the matter favourably. As a small state with a strong multilateral perspective, Liechtenstein fully appreciates Palestine's desire to take its place amongst the member states of this assembly. We have worked on equal footing with the state of Palestine in the framework of many essential multilateral treaties from the Geneva Conventions to the Rome Statute of the International Criminal Court. We also appreciate this opportunity for members of the organisation to make our positions clear, as has been the case in previous applications for membership that were subject to the veto. Membership is the question on which the veto has been most frequently cast in the history of the United Nations, while it has thankfully been long years since the veto we are discussing today. As is well known, as the lead proponent of the veto initiative, we have advocated regularly for the General Assembly to take its own action when responding to veto in the Security Council. Constitutionally, the only course of action for the Assembly is indeed invitation to the Council to look at the application again in light of the stated will of the membership as a whole. Mr. President, I wish to reiterate Liechtenstein's support for the two-state solution as a prerequisite for peace in the entire Middle East region in line with the relevant resolutions of the Security Council and General Assembly. It was our clear expectation at the time Palestine became a non-member observer state of the General Assembly in 2012 that this decision was made on the understanding that Palestine fulfilled the basic criteria for statehood under international law. Full membership was at the time not seen as politically feasible, and the observer status granted by this assembly was deemed as a reasonable compromise in the circumstances. Instead, the prospect of membership was seen by some as incentivising the Palestinian Authority to engage in serious and credible negotiations towards a two-state solution. Unfortunately, since the adoption of the resolution confirming Palestine's status as an observer state, we have not seen progress in the negotiations between the parties. Regrettably, and in part due to the lack of a political settlement between the parties that could have built a constituency for peace, the two-state solution is now openly questioned, both by Hamas but also by members of the current Israeli government who have made clear that they will oppose the creation of a Palestinian state of any kind. Instead, it appears that the lack of progress in negotiations and accordingly in the posture of our organisation has strengthened these actors by ensuring that the status quo ante from which they benefit remains in place. They have in turn increasingly created facts on the ground that make implementation of the two-state solution much more difficult. Given this dynamic, it is thus neither appropriate nor effective to use the denial of Palestinian membership in this organisation as a leverage towards final status negotiations. Mr. President, the membership of the state of Palestine in the United Nations would be an expression of the right of the Palestinian people to self-determination under international law. Its reconsideration by the Security Council in light of the criteria contained in Article IV of the UN Charter is a necessary step in this regard. The membership would demonstrate our commitment to ensure that the Palestinian people are able to live in a secure, peaceful and dignified manner, side by side with the state of Israel as two states with equal rights, as envisaged in Resolution 181 of this assembly. Mr. President, this is why Liechtenstein has voted in favour of today's resolution. We are grateful to the authors of the text for having accepted revisions to the original text which makes it clear that the provisions of the resolution are in line with the Charter of the United Nations. We further put on the record our continued condemnation of the terrorist attacks of 7th of October. Today, this assembly has made an unequivocal statement in support of the two-state solution. I thank you.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Liechtenstein, and I now offer the floor to the representative of the Syrian Arab Republic.
I thank you, Mr. President. We thank you for resuming the tenth emergency special session of the General Assembly, which is being held as we witnessed the continuation of humanitarian suffering in the Gaza Strip as a result of the wars of genocide, the war crimes and the crimes against humanity perpetrated by the Israeli occupation forces against the Palestinian people. These crimes have led to the martyrdom of over 35,000 Palestinians, most of whom are women and children. The pain and suffering of the Palestinian people under the yoke of occupation have been met with widespread international solidarity and were accompanied by strong demands to put an end to the genocide being perpetrated by Israel and to give the Palestinians a legitimate right as affirmed by the principles of this organisation and relevant resolutions. My country Syria, along with over 140 states, in favour of the resolution just adopted by the General Assembly, to ask the Security Council to favourably reconsider Palestine's application for full membership in the United Nations in a manner that would support this membership and would do justice to the Palestinian people who are suffering under the occupation. Mr. President, granting Palestine full membership in the United Nations is an entrenchment of the principles of international law and the principles of the United Nations. It is an achievement of rights and a recognition of an inherent and inalienable right of the Palestinian people, and the fact that the majority of member states voted a few minutes ago in favour of this resolution clearly shows their call for lifting the oppression that the Palestinian people have been subject to for almost eight decades. The lies and the claims and the shows that the representative of the Israeli occupying regime puts on will not succeed in hiding this truth. Syria confirms that the fact that the United States, as its allies, attempts to stop the establishment of a sovereign Palestinian state on Palestinian soil and their use of the veto last time against granting Palestine membership will only contribute to prolonging the lack of security and stability that was created by the Israeli occupation of the lands of several Arab states in Palestine, Syria and Lebanon. Syria confirms that its vote for the resolution is an expression of its firm and principled position that strongly supports the Palestinian people and their legitimate rights, and this in no way means a recognition of Israel or removing its attribution as an occupier. And here, we renew our demand for putting the United Nations resolutions and of relevance into action to put an end to the occupation and to guarantee a full Israeli withdrawal from occupied Arab territories, including the occupied Syrian Golan until the 4th June 1967 lines. Mr. President, Syria condemns in the strongest terms the barbaric Israeli attack that continues against the sincerely Palestinian people and the accompanying and repeated attacks on Syrian land and our people in the occupied Syrian Golan. We demand an end to this aggression. Syria condemns the unlimited support that some Western states are offering with the United States at their forefront. We condemn the support that is being given to Israel as it perpetuates violations and crimes and aggressions in Palestine, in Syria and Lebanon, and we condemn that it prevents the Security Council from upholding its responsibilities to maintain international peace and security. This shows this Western support for Israel by handful of Western states. This support shows hypocrisy and double standards in dealing with matters of human rights and with matters on the maintenance of international peace and security and the noble principles and values that have been upheld in the Charter of the United Nations. Syria reiterates its support for the Palestinian people as they struggle to liberate their occupied land. We stress the need to immediately stop the Israeli aggression and to offer urgent humanitarian aid to the people of Gaza and to stop their forceful displacement and eviction, and be warned of the dangers of attacking Rafah, which is the last resort to the people of Gaza. My country confirms the need to hold accountable the Israeli war criminals for the crimes that they have perpetrated and to guarantee that they do not enjoy impunity. I thank you, Mr. President.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of the Syrian Arab Republic, and I now invite the distinguished representative of the Republic of Korea to take the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. With adoption of today's resolution, Palestine has been granted additional methods of participation in the UN General Assembly. As a non-member observer, the Republic of Korea voted in favour of the resolution proposed by the Arab group, hoping that Palestine's enhanced participation in the UN General Assembly will be another step towards the realisation of the two-state solution. We believe that in the future, when an appropriate time comes, Palestine will be able to serve as a member of the United Nations in accordance with the Charter, which will be a critical step towards the ultimate goal of the two-state solution and lasting peace. The Republic of Korea also voted in favour of the resolution with the understanding that the modalities provided in the resolution are only effective within the scope of the UN Charter and that the resolution does not constitute a precedent for other cases, as clearly provided in the resolution. We also note that our vote in favour does not constitute bilateral recognition of Palestine as a state. At a future time that is most conducive to the resolution of the conflict, the Republic of Korea will consider this important matter. Mr. President, more than seven months has passed since the outbreak of the current situation, triggered by the horrendous terrorist attacks by Hamas against Israeli civilians. The ongoing military operations in Gaza by Israel has caused unfathomable suffering for innocent Palestinian civilians in Gaza, and now we are standing at a critical juncture that could either lead to a deal for a vital ceasefire and the release of hostages or a massive and bloody ground operation in Rafah, where 1.4 million people are packed with despair and fear. At this stage, it is vital that the utmost diplomatic efforts by the US, Egypt and Qatar can lead to an invaluable outcome. As such, we urge the parties to the conflict to prioritise the suffering of Gazan civilians and Israeli hostages over any other considerations and to take the right path towards the ceasefire. Neither the 2.3 million people in Gaza nor the Israeli hostages and their families deserve this tragedy. Mr. President, with the adoption of today's resolution, we hope that Palestine can play a bigger role in contributing to securing peace and stability in the Middle East and that this resolution will expedite long overdue negotiations between the parties toward the common and much anticipated goal of the two-state solution and peace, security and dignity for all. I thank you, Mr. President.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of the Republic of Korea. We have heard the last... Oh. I now offer the floor to the distinguished representative of Switzerland.
Thank you, President. Switzerland abstained on this draft resolution in line with its position on the 18th of April at the Security Council on the resolution proposing the admission of Palestine as a full member state of the United Nations. We felt that in view of the great instability prevailing in the region, this stage was not conducive to improving the situation. Without opposing it, we believe it would be preferable to consider admitting Palestine as a full member of the United Nations at a time when such a step would insert itself into the logic of an emerging peace. Such an admission would however have to follow the procedures enshrined in the Charter, taking into account the role of the Security Council based on a decision by all its members forged on their common appreciation. In our view, however, too many of the elements included in the resolution submitted to the General Assembly for a vote today prejudge the opinion that the members of the Committee for the admission of new members will have to provide when the time comes in accordance with the Charter. Switzerland, however, recognises that the observer state of Palestine and its representatives in New York have the necessary have the necessary qualities to honor the enhanced status to which they aspire within the General Assembly. Abstention does not apply to the prerogatives described in the annex to this resolution. These are in line with the observer state status we voted for in 2012 and which the observer state of Palestine has so far adequately fulfilled. Finally, Switzerland's abstention does not change our firm support to the two-state solution. We are convinced that only a negotiated solution in which two states, Israel and Palestine, live side by side in peace and security can lead to lasting peace between Israelis and Palestinians. President, since the act of terror perpetrated by Hamas on the 7th of October, which Switzerland has strongly condemned, Switzerland has continually reiterated its deep concern about the situation in Israel and throughout the occupied Palestinian territory. Already catastrophic for the civilian population, the situation is likely to worsen tragically in the event of a major Israeli military offensive at Rafah. Such a prospect is unacceptable and Switzerland reaffirms its opposition to such an operation. Humanitarians are far too often targets of violence and hostilities. Attacks such as the one on Ennois premises in East Jerusalem are unacceptable. Humanitarians must be able to do their work in complete safety. Humanitarian relief personnel and property used for humanitarian relief operations must be respected and protected at all times. It is essential for the parties to implement the binding resolutions adopted by the Security Council. As Resolutions 2712, 2720, 2728 and 2334 also reiterate, Switzerland recalls that parties must respect their obligations under international law, in particular international humanitarian law and human rights law. Amongst these obligations, Switzerland recalls in particular that forcible transfer is prohibited in the same way as the deliberate use of starvation as a method of warfare. It is time for a ceasefire. The safety of civilians must be ensured. All hostages must be released immediately and unconditionally and safe, rapid and unhindered access humanitarian aid must be allowed throughout the Gaza Strip via all crossing points. This tragedy has gone on far too long. It is time to put an end to it. Thank you very much.
I should like to thank the distinguished representative of Switzerland for his statement. We have heard the last speaker in explanation of vote after the vote for this meeting. We shall hear the remaining speakers in explanation of vote after the vote this afternoon at 3:00 PM in this hall, to be followed by the resumption of the debate on Agenda Item 5. The meeting is adjourned.